The Gateway brings you the day's news from the St. Louis region and across Missouri. It also includes stories from the Illinois side of the river and our Metro East reporter, Will Bauer.
In Alton, in Belleville, in East St. Louis, in Edwardsville, in Cogia Heights. At Scott Air Force Base, I'm Will Bauer, St. Louis Public Radio.
Listen to reports from Will and all of our journalists weekdays on The Gateway on the STLPR app and wherever you get podcasts.
St. Charles County is one of the fastest-growing areas of Missouri. It's also grown into a major Republican stronghold. Two people who have benefited from that GOP shift are Bob Onder and Bill Igles, the two senators that represent the entire county. The Republicans join us from Picasso's Coffee House in St. Charles on another edition of Politically Speaking, so let's hit the music.
This is the Politically Speaking Podcast, a candid conversation with the show me state's biggest political newsmakers.
I'm Jason Rosenbaum.
And I'm Joe Manis.
That's Eric Greitens, Navy SEALs running for governor, and I'm really, really glad to be on with you, Jason and Joe.
I'm going to push back on these regulators.
I'm doing this for the people.
I was encouraged along the way, not just by my family, but by a lot of teachers and professors, and knew when I was in college that I would run for office someday.
We're very excited about the prospect of having some more free-market solutions.
Even though after the conversation, I still might not agree.
We want our listeners to get a real sense of what drives these people.
They're actually people with a story to tell. And welcome to the Politically Speaking Podcast, the only podcast about Missouri politics that knows the difference between O'Fallon, Illinois and O'Fallon, Missouri. I'm your host, Jason Rosenbaum, a reporter with St. Louis Public Radio. We are live from Picasso's Coffee House on Main Street in St. Charles. Technically, Joe, we're taping this, but we're recording in front of a live audience.
Right, right. We're always live during the podcast. It's just a matter of having an audience or not. Yeah, and I'm Joe Manis, his colleague.
And introducing our two guests today. We usually only interview one, but we decided, since we're in St. Charles, which is one of the fastest-growing areas in the entire state of Missouri.
Actually, the entire country.
Entire country. We thought we'd go big or go home. So our first guest, who was elected last year, the first time he's ever been elected to anything.
Bill Igles, the state senator from the 23rd Senatorial District.
And the second person who was elected in 2014 to the Missouri Senate and 2006 to the Missouri House for one term.
Yeah, Bob Onder, I represent the 2nd Senatorial District in Western St. Charles County.
And we're recording this on Wednesday afternoon. The Missouri General Assembly is in special session. I just want to thank Senate Majority Leader Mike Kehoe for scheduling tomorrow's session on a Thursday and not today, otherwise we may have had to cancel this. Although you were telling me before the show, both of you, that you may not actually do that much tomorrow in the special session.
Yeah, it's a technical session. The Constitution requires that you convene every 10 days during a technical session. So no, there probably will only be a member or two around tomorrow.
So for people that don't know right now, the reason the legislature is still in session well after May is that Governor Eric Greitens called lawmakers back to consider legislation aimed at restricting abortion. There's a lot of things that are in the legislation that was passed by the House. Joe, can you kind of give us a summation of what lawmakers are dealing with right now?
Okay, in some ways, I'm going to defer to Senator Onder, because he's been one of the authors, particularly of the original version in the Senate that kind of got trimmed, and then they restored some of it in the House. Bottom line is this, as it stands now, I'm simplifying, the version that the House passed, A, it dealt with the anti-discrimination provision in the city of St. Louis's ordinance that protects women who are pregnant, have used contraception, or have had abortions from discrimination by landlords or employers. There are some who question the wording, some who feel that this isn't something that one municipality can do, since it doesn't apply statewide. There are different discussions on exactly what the wording in the bill means, and I actually will ask Senator Onder his thoughts on that. There's another provision in the House bill that makes sure that the only remaining abortion clinic and any new ones that are opened up are subject to annual unannounced inspections, that they have to meet certain criteria. And now, originally, for close to 10 years, they had been subject to the same standards that apply to surgical, ambulatory surgical centers. That's been changed because of the U.S. Supreme Court ruling, to simplify all this. And then there's a provision that has to do with ambulances, but we'll get into that later. But this is the key part of this. This is the second special session that they've had since May. The first one was on economic issues. There's rumors there may be more. And each special session costs, when both chambers are in, close to $20,000 a day, correct?
That's correct, although it's rare that both chambers are in at the same time.
Yeah, correct. So they're doing what they can to kind of restrict expenses. Senator Onder, actually, I had interviewed him a few weeks before for a larger radio piece and web piece that I did on the abortion issue before we knew that a special session was being called. So he was very prescient in that piece, because he said he was pressing the governor to call one because of various issues.
So yeah, Senator Onder, you were one of the main people who wanted a special session on this. Tell me why, and how do you think it's gone so far?
Sure, Jason. Well, you know, appropriately, the great majority of work that the legislature does is done during the regular session, but occasionally issues arise that are pressing, that issues emerge that cannot wait until the next year. And two things arose in this case. One was the decision by Judge Harold Sacks of the Western District of Missouri to strike down common sense health and safety regulations that had been present in one way or the other in Missouri since 1986. And secondly, the St. Louis City Board of Aldermen passing Board Bill 203, what many of us refer to as the abortion sanctuary city bill, that could potentially harm pregnancy care centers and the good work they do. So I applaud Governor Greitens for calling us back into special session for two reasons. One is to protect pregnancy care centers, and the other is to restore common sense health and safety measures to protect Missouri women.
Senator Igles, what was kind of your thoughts when the governor called lawmakers back into session? Because while Senator Onder was one of the people happy about that, I know that some of your Republican colleagues were less than enthused to come back in this late spring, summer time period.
Well, I tell you what, it's like I've said before, that it's always extraordinary to protect the sanctity of human life. And it's always a good time to meet, whether that's in a special session, whether that's in a regular session, to meet, defend the lives of the unborn. I support that. That was a key issue in my campaign, which we just got done with, which was a two-year process. So I'm happy to go down and help defend those values. And I think we'll find that a vast majority of the Republican caucus are interested in fighting for those same protections. I'm pleased that the governor is engaging on this issue, and I think that he's been more engaged in the past month than maybe he has maybe ever that I've seen him, including the campaign.
Short timeframe, given that he's only been in office for five months.
Yeah, so I'm happy to do this. I think this is the right message. This is the right policy, and I'm looking forward to supporting Senator Onder, actually supporting Senator Koenig, I should say.
That's right.
As that bill moves, comes back from the House and moves through the upper chamber.
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to clarify. State Senator Koenig, who is from St. Louis County, his Senate bill actually ended up being the final vehicle. And also, and I should have said this before, we did a podcast yesterday with St. Louis Alderwoman Megan Green, who is the chief sponsor of the St. Louis ordinance at issue here. So if you want to hear the other side, you can go to our website, and you can hear it.
And she brought up something interesting on our show that I wanted to bounce off of, both of you. And some other opponents of what you're doing read the wording regarding the St. Louis ordinance, and they believe that it doesn't necessarily completely repeal it, because in her opinion, the ordinance already exempts pregnancy resource centers, and therefore it wouldn't void it. Could either of you kind of elaborate on what that part of the bill actually does?
Well, the way I read for Bill 203, there's no exemption for pregnancy resource centers. There's a very limited religious organization exemption, but not nearly enough, and not enough that it kept the archdiocese of St. Louis schools out of the lawsuit that was filed on May 25th. But the problem with the bill is that it is worded so broadly, so reproductive health decisions is written so broadly, that in the employment context, an abortion advocate could go to work for it, apply to work at a pregnancy care center or at a religiously affiliated school, and say, yeah, no, I plan to advocate for abortion as I work for your organization, and then would have a lawsuit when they were not hired for that job. So I believe the goal of that bill is to really harass and perhaps sue out of business pregnancy care centers who do so much for women, to help them with food and clothing, shelter, helping them find prenatal care and even jobs. So I think it's really appropriate that the legislature take this action to protect pregnancy care centers.
Now, Senator Onder, your bill had originally been the vehicle, then it got changed for various reasons, to Senator Andrew Koenig's bill. Without getting into the turf war, A, what were your thoughts about that? And B, what are your thoughts about how the House bill is now? Because now this comes back to the Senate, and if you think it's going to have a hard time.
Well, I agree with Senator Igles. I think Andrew Koenig is going to be an excellent handler for the bill. I think he's, in fact, he was the author of the part of the bill that would give the Attorney General power of enforcement of our laws in this area. Andrew Koenig is an excellent handler of the bill. I would say that the bill we passed out of the Senate covered about 2/3 of the things in the governor's call, and I would summarize that the House bill covers all of the things in the governor's call, which I think is a positive development, and I think the amended bill will meet a good reception in the Missouri Senate.
I want to talk about one other aspect involving the St. Louis ordinance, and I'll throw it to Senator Igles. A lot of St. Louis-area politicians have been a little irked that the legislature has effectively repealed things that the Board of Aldermen has passed. They say it's kind of a usurpation of local control, and I think some have even said, you know, how would the St. Charles County feel, for example? The legislature invalidated, like, their charter amendment banning red light cameras. I'm sure they wouldn't be that happy about it. What's kind of your reaction to that line of argument? Because I'm sure you heard that a lot on the Senate floor, but obviously, I don't think you find it very persuasive.
Well, I think you have to ask, and this is always a good question to ask any elected officials, what does any official, elected at the city, the state, what have you, what do they believe the proper role of government is? When I answer that question, I always say it's to protect the rights of the citizens. As a pro-life individual that believes that life begins at conception, I believe that we have a responsibility to protect life. I'm supporting this particular, and it doesn't matter if there's another subdivision within the state that is trying to pass laws that doesn't protect the rights of the citizen, then we, as the General Assembly, have a responsibility, a constitutional responsibility, to step in and restore balance and restore those protections that we see have been abridged. And I think that when we talk about life protections, that's a very prescient question. I think there was something else that we've also done that you didn't ask about, but it had to be with the minimum wage discussion.
The minimum wage, that was what I was alluding to.
Same conversation. I don't see these as conversations about whether or not we're supporting local control. I see these as supporting the rights and liberties of individuals to go about their economic business, protecting the rights of life and of the unborn. And I think you'll see us continue to do that. You know, St. Louis City, I admit I've been critical of. They've been on a path for many years now that is leading them into some very troubling economic and social waters, and they've been under the control of a single party going back to World War II. And so it's very difficult to get new ideas and different ways of doing business down there in the city. And that's troubling for a guy like me and my constituents, because we need a vibrant, strong St. Louis city. And so we'll continue to provide the protections that we feel the city is not providing when they pass bills, whether it's the board bill having to do with sanctuary cities, or it's minimum wage laws that aren't in good standing with what we have set forth in our constitution at the state.
Senator Onder, can you kind of opine on that question, too?
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, in our constitutional system of government, the states are sovereign. We elect state officials, and cities and counties are political subdivisions. They're set up by the state government, and as a matter of fact, our federal government was set up by the states. And occasionally, and we're all, not only, we are not only, do we swear to uphold the laws of the state of Missouri, but also the constitutions of the United States and of the state of Missouri. And when a political subdivision, in this case, the city of St. Louis, does something directly contrary to the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States, infringing upon freedom of religion and freedom of speech, it is time for the state of Missouri to take action.
Now, do you expect that there may be other special sessions, either dealing with, there may be other issues, but where it's still, where local control is in some way one of the aspects of it? Do you expect there'll be any more this summer, or what are your thoughts right now?
You want me to take that one, Bill?
Yeah, you know, I honestly don't expect any more special sessions. The way I put it is that the governor now says that everything's on the table, and he does feel that there were some very important things that we didn't get done in the legislature this regular session that would be good topics for special session. But I think things, to be a subject of a special session, ought to be not only important, but also timely in some way urgent. You know, and in the case of the bill we're considering right now, the final ruling by Judge Sacks was only on May 2nd. I don't think a lot of us realized just how bad the abortion sanctuary city bill was until the lawsuit was filed on May 25th. So I think that clearly, protecting the health and safety of women in our clinics cannot wait another year for us to do something next May, and that would go into effect next August. So I don't, right now, at this moment, see other issues that rise to that urgency.
Now, do either of you senators see that there may be legal fights, depending on what the final, final bill ends up being after the Senate goes through it again?
You know, I think in the issue of, a good friend of mine said, the only group more litigious than trial lawyers is the abortion industry. So I fully expect there will be a lawsuit. And I think, look, the governing Supreme Court precedent is Planned Parenthood versus Casey, which is a couple of decades old, and of course Hellerstedt, which is one year old. I think the health and safety regulations in Senate Bill 5 are well within the bounds set up by, in fact, a lot of the provisions, for instance, annual inspections, were actually praised in the Hellerstedt decision last June. So I think, sure, there'll be litigation, but I think the law, the bill we're looking now will stand constitutional muster.
I do want to kind of look backwards before we look forwards, which is kind of disorienting. But we just got through Governor Greitens' first legislative session. In his press conference, when everybody adjourned, and your chamber was especially chaotic near the end, which you can maybe talk about a little bit, he was not particularly happy with the low amount of bills that went to his desk. I think that might be one of the reasons why we've had two special sessions so far. What's kind of your, both of your views on kind of how the legislative session went? Because on the one hand, you passed bills that some Republicans had wanted for many, many years. On the other hand, things that I think both parties wanted ran into a lot of trouble. So Senator Igles, I'll start with you.
Well, I think, first of all, there is, from my philosophical perspective, I think there's a lot to be happy about with what we were able to accomplish this session. We passed several labor reform measures that have been stymied for years, most, chief among them being the passage of right-to-work laws. That was something that we spent a lot of time talking about in my primary, and I think that really sent a message that Missouri is open for business, and that we're providing that personal liberty for folks to maintain their employment without being forced to join a third party. So I think that was very important. We also passed a ban on project labor agreements, which will increase competition for government contracts. Senator Onder sponsored that legislation. We also advanced the ball, per se, on tort reform. Now, tort reform is something I typically refer to as getting lawyers out of the way of business. And in the state of Missouri, we have an environment where there's a lot of tortious, frivolous lawsuits being brought against business owners that are harming the business climate. And without giving you a rundown of all those, I think it was very successful. I know that the governor wanted to accomplish more, and I'm looking forward to finishing up this special session. And I think there's a lot more, a lot more good work to be done in store for the next session in January.
Yeah, I agree with Senator Igles. In fact, in the area of tort reform, the Senate passed not one or two tort reform bills, but actually 11, of which I think about half a dozen are on the governor's desk right now or have been signed. And in the area of deregulation, I think a big landmark was a bill that I was honored to work on with Representative Kirk Matthews, the transportation network company or ride-sharing company bill, that is now allowing Uber and Lyft to operate without restriction across the state of Missouri, across city and county lines. So I think that is one of these high-tech industries that we really needed to, we really needed to get some of our archaic regulations out of the way to create thousands of new jobs in the state.
I saw the social media reaction to that. That might have been one of the few times that people, both on the left and the right, applauded what you did.
I think that's right. Thank you.
Now, one of the more contentious bills during this session, of course, was SB 43, which, to boil it to a nutshell, will make it more difficult for someone to sue for discrimination and win, because they have to meet a higher standard. There's been various accusations on both sides about what the bill actually will end up doing. The governor has yet to indicate if he's going to sign it, veto it, or let it go into law without a signature, which is an option in Missouri, and sometimes governors do that. Nixon did that on a few abortion bills, for example. So any thoughts on what you think might happen with that, and might that be an issue that might be revisited next session, or not? Or do you guys think it's settled?
Yeah, SB 43 was the employment discrimination bill. And again, no one condones discrimination on the basis of race, or age, or sex, or religion, but the standard that was being instituted by our courts was lower than, I think, what was originally intended by statute. And the issue, just to boil it down, was whether to sue for discrimination, you had to prove that it was a motivating factor for your firing, or whether it was a, quote, "contributing factor." I mean, and the example, you know, I give is that someone who admitted they were fired mostly because they were late to work, and they didn't do the work while they were there, and many times they showed up to work intoxicated, but they could say, well, 1% I think is because of your, because you don't like my age or my sex, could still sue. And I think that defies common sense, and I think getting the law back to where it was intended to be by the legislature when it was passed makes sense. I suspect Governor Greitens will sign it.
Senator Igles?
Yeah, I agree with that assessment. You know, as I mentioned earlier, I believe the role of government is to protect the rights of the citizen, and that includes all citizens. And there are a lot of business owners here in the state, small business owners, that were having, I believe, their rights violated, because they were coming under litigation that was, that had a standard of liability that was so low that we was, you know, Missouri is becoming known for this type of environment, and that hurts all of us. So protecting the rights of those individuals, as well as the rights of our workers, was very important to us. And so I think that, I agree with Senator Onder, I think the governor's going to sign that. For me, if he did not sign that or evicted that, I think that would be a stunning reversal for what is a pretty conservative philosophy.
Now, yeah, were there any measures that you think will have a particular impact, either in St. Charles or in the St. Louis area?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Any particular bills, and of course, I mean, I don't want to repeat, we just talked about as far as the special session, but as far as other bills that passed in the General Assembly, that you think will have a particular impact in your district, in the St. Charles area, or even the metro area?
I'll give you two. And Senator Onder already mentioned one of them, which was the Uber bill. We now have Uber, and I feel like we've now entered the 21st century, and it'll be much easier for folks to get around. This is going to show up every Friday and Saturday night, when folks have a new way to avoid drinking and driving, and I think that is a fantastic bill. I was supportive from the very start. The next time you get into an Uber cab, you've got Senator Onder really to thank for that. So I think that was a phenomenal piece of legislation. I would also say that we avoided the negative effects of minimum wage increases in the city of St. Louis by preempting the bill that the city of St. Louis passed. As I said earlier, we need a vibrant, economically strong center of St. Louis, leading the way forward, not just for the region, but for the state. And if we had allowed that type of bill to go into effect, I believe consumer costs would have risen dramatically inside the city. Folks are already leaving the St. Louis, and they would have continued to do so, and ultimately, that would have hurt all of us. So I think that those two bills, in my mind, really stand out.
One of the things that I did want to ask, though, there are several, a number of initiative petitions that have been filed for circulation, and many of them have to do with the minimum wage, which is, so...
And many of them are trying to undo right-to-work as well.
Right, exactly. So I don't want to get into all of them, because frankly, there's, I mean, I'm doing a story on over 20 that have to do with pot, but my point is, we have a slew of proposed initiative petitions. So I'm particularly interested in the ones that have to do with the minimum wage and...
Right-to-work.
And right-to-work. So my point being is, for the General Assembly, for your senators, how will you deal if any of those end up being on the ballot, that are basically trying to undo what you did?
Well, yeah, I think, Joe, that's a good question. You know, a lot is made of the fact that we didn't pass as many bills this year as many other legislative sessions, but I think some of the things we did tackle were very, very big bills. And again, Senator Igles mentioned a number of them, like tort reform and unemployment discrimination and so on. But really, the, probably the biggest bill of the session was right-to-work. When Governor Greitens signed that bill into law, Missouri became the 38th right-to-work state. You know, and since the end of the Great Recession, four out of five jobs have been created in right-to-work states. Job growth, wage growth, has outstripped, in right-to-work states, has outstripped that in forced union states. So we really, what would be the legislative response? Well, I really think that the voters of the state of Missouri will uphold right-to-work, and I think that labor reform is one of the great accomplishments of this session, and I think it's going to, it's here to stay.
Could the fact that unions are trying to overturn right-to-work actually compel the legislature to pass more things that could be perceived as not so good to unions? Because there's only a finite amount of resources a lot of these groups have, and I don't think they could put every single policy initiative on the ballot. Could that possibly be a consequence of right-to-work going up for a vote?
Well, I think there is other labor reform that we ought to do, but I don't like to think of it in those political terms. I like to think of it as being good policy. For instance, prevailing wage, the so-called, the Missouri version of the federal Davis Bacon. All over our state, we have, we have cities, we have towns, we have school districts who have projects they would like to do, but because we have these outdated prevailing wage laws that require the school district or the town hall to overpay for public construction, essentially to pay a St. Louis city union wage, even though you might be in Schuyler County or Montgomery County, that really is holding back the rural economy, which is a huge problem. You know, when we passed the steel mill bill, it was observed that 10 out of, eight out of the 10 poorest countries in our state, counties in the state were down in southeast Missouri. So I think there is other labor reform we should do, but not necessarily for the reason you stated, Jason.
I do kind of want to look forward to the things that didn't end up being passed in the legislature. One of the things that actually came into my inbox today from state auditor Nicole Galloway was about tax credits. Now, I know that the, tax credits, for our audience that may not know what it is, are basically incentives to do certain things, like build low-income housing, or restore buildings, or to create certain types of economic development. And one of the things that Auditor Galloway pointed out is that even though there are a lot of legislators and the governor who have been critical of tax credits, and some who have thought that cutting tax credits may help the budget next year, there's like a $3 billion backlog of tax credits that are either been issued or being planned to be issued over the next 15 years, which means if you got rid of all of them, you still have to eventually dim them out. And Joe wants to make another point.
Yeah, I want to make another point. Now, we're talking about state tax credits. These are separate from whatever the federal tax credits are. Right now, state tax credits, at least the general estimates before this year, have been, they were taking roughly about $600 million out of the state budget a year. Now, some would say that the economic boon that some of these provide makes up for that. So, but I'm just putting that out there, just so you get a sense of the debate that's been going on for years, but frankly, governors going back to map blonde. I mean, this goes over 10 years, have been, of both parties. Jay Nixon, this was a big, have been pushing for change. So that's one of the things that I was wondering if the legislature, which is dominated by Republicans, but if you think that this might be an issue that will be brought up, or not?
Well, I absolutely think this is going to be an issue. Well, I, I absolutely think this is going to be an issue that's brought up. You know, tax credits came about because back 15, 20, 25 years ago, it was, they were seen as a way to somehow reduce the tax burden on our, on our citizens and our businesses. They were targeted, so they weren't distributed, they weren't distributed evenly amongst the populace, but it was a way to kind of roll back that, and we had Democratic majorities, which typically look for larger government. But now here, we're in a situation where a lot of these tax credit programs have gotten so far out of control, and they're automatically authorized outside the appropriation process of the legislature. And as, as Joe mentioned, it's a lot of money. It's $600 million a year that are being redeemed. Now, Jason, you're right, a lot of credits have already been issued, and I believe the state's going to honor all those credits that have already been issued. But moving forward, I think I expect some massive reforms to our credit programs so that we're not spending $1 billion a year in what I term as corporate welfare, which is essentially having the government pick winners and losers and beneficiaries of certain government policies, in this case, tax credit programs, that not all businesses get. You know, I ran a Skyline business for 10 years. I never got a single dollar of tax credit money from the state, and I don't think that the benefits, or lack of benefits, certainly, as from my perspective, the lack of benefits of these programs justify, justify how we're utilizing the people's money.
Senator Onder, I mean, these tax credit programs have been proposed to be cut for a long time, but they also have a lot of powerful backers, bankers, city politicians.
Developers.
Developers.
St. Louis Blues.
St. Louis Blues.
Claire McCaskill's husband.
That is true. I mean, I know that you were, I know that you were joking about that, but Claire McCaskill's husband is one of the largest players in the low-income housing tax credit community.
So, yeah, yeah. The auditor's report issued today, in addition to the $3 billion that, that the state has on the credit card, $5.4 billion over the last 10 years have been issued in, in tax, in tax credit, tax credit relief. You know, I know, one of, one of Senator Eichel's great passions is, is, is transportation and road funding. And, and, I mean, think of what we could have done with that 5, 4.4 million, a billion, billion with a B dollars over the last decade. Likewise, education. One thing I've been working on is course access, so that kids, regardless of school district, can take the courses they need to succeed. Just think what we could do with rural broadband, or do with, with just tax relief, tax, tax cuts. So although well-intentioned, tax credits have gotten out of hand, and the other thing is they're very inefficient. So, so, well, first of all, only 15 of the, of the 50 states had a low-income housing tax credit to begin with, but even, even if you, you believe that the state government ought to be subsidizing public housing, they're only about, only, I believe, 40 cents of the dollar of the tax credit actually ends up going to the low-income housing project. That's something that a former auditor, Tom Schweick, pointed out. So they're inefficient, they're out of control, and as Senator Eichel implied, they do, they do, they, they do constitute a form of crony capitalism. I think they really need to be revisited, and I think the work of the governor's tax commission is going to be very useful in guiding the way on what to do in this area.
A couple more topics before we turn it over to questions. Senate President Pro Tem Ron Richard, in an interview with me, signaled that next session, he wants to take a pretty close look on restructuring St. Louis government and shaking things up. He talked about merging cities, he talked about merging fire protection districts, and merging the city and the county, possibly from the state perspective rather than the local one. I know we're in St. Charles County, and I don't think there's any danger of St. Charles County merging with St. Louis or St. Louis County now, but, I mean, you, both of you are going to be in on that debate. Should St. Louis and St. Louis County residents take Senator Richard's words seriously, that it's going to be a, a major issue next year?
Well, I, I think that, you know, part of the reason that this conversation keeps coming up is the, the track that St. Louis City is on, which I have mentioned already is a very negative track. Folks are leaving St. Louis City in droves because they're not, they don't like the economic conditions, they don't like the, the social conditions, and so it's created a, a real hole there in one of the most important areas of our state. So I, I will tell you this, I think that the people of St. Louis County and the people of St. Louis City need to have the loudest voices in the room when it comes to whether or not they want to make that decision. Because I, as a conservative, I like the idea, if there's an opportunity where we can consolidate government, where we can get rid of unnecessary government, I think that's always a positive conversation. But it has to be in a manner that doesn't necessarily create an imbalance in what the folks of St. Louis County, or the, the folks of St. Louis City are, are going to have to support. So I think that's a legitimate question, and certainly, and from the General Assembly's perspective, for an assembly that is consistently rolling back some of the legislation coming out of the city, I think that this is a pertinent conversation.
Yeah. One of the other issues that I, might come up is transportation. I mean, there was something on the ballot recently, didn't pass, got creamed. Do you have any thoughts on what sort of proposal you could pose to Missouri voters that they might go along with? I mean, because I think everybody agrees that Interstate 70 is in bad shape. There's a number of bridges that are in really bad shape. Missouri ranks pretty low as far as the quality of the bridges and its major roads. Any thoughts on what could be done?
Well, yes, and Senator Onder can tell you, it's dangerous to ask me a transportation question, because we might be here all day. I'll, I'll talk about transportation for a long time. I'll tell you what, here's how I see transportation. The, we, we, we do have a need for additional funding in the transportation realm, specifically with the rebuild of I-70, which is going to take up to $4 billion over the next eight to 10 years. What I have always said is that we can set aside the funding that we need with the money that's already going to Jefferson City from the taxpayers. We have a budget that's bigger than it's ever been before, over $28 billion. The idea that we should go back to the taxpayers, either for more tax revenue or for more toll roads, which is basically a different form of a consumption tax, is, is in my mind ridiculous. The people of Missouri have already made their investment and their sacrifice and sent a record amount of money to Jefferson City. If we can take just 3% of what they're sending us to, what they're sending to us out of our general revenue fund and dedicate it to something that virtually every one of my constituents, I believe, feels that is a huge priority of the state, then we could make this happen, and there will be no need for additional toll roads, no need for additional taxes, just better roads for Missouri. And that's, you know, I've been appointed to a task force that's going to look at precisely those issues here in the next couple of months, and I think we're going to have some good recommendations moving forward when the regular session kicks off in January.
So we're going to open it up to about 15 or 20 minutes of questions. If, if you have a question, come to the mic here with Mary, say your name, ask your question, and let's have some fun here, basically.
Well, it would be good also that, if you identified yourself.
Yes. So here we go. First question.
Hello, my name is Alex. I actually live right down the road. We discussed right-to-work earlier, and I just started my career as an EMT in November. And so this has been the first time that I've ever been part of a union. And I've heard that in other states, EMS has been exempted from the right-to-work legislation. So I'm wondering if either one of you could explain a little bit more what right-to-work does, and whether or not, in Missouri, EMS would be exempted from it?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's a good point. So what right-to-work stands, does, is, it stands for the proposition that no one should be fired for refusing to either join a union or support a union financially. And the good news for you as, as a public sector union member is that whether right-to-work passes or not in Missouri, it's, it's extremely rare for there to be public sector union contracts that have these agency shop agreements. So by and large, teachers or firefighters, or, or, or local county government workers, none of their contracts include these agency-free agreements that force you to pay union dues, even if you don't want to be a member of the union. So, so by and large, in the state of Missouri, and then really actually, public sector union reform is something I've worked on, by and large, in the state of Missouri, the right-to-work issue is moot for public sector workers.
All right. Next question.
Yeah, hi, John Sexton. One comment, I, I would say a toll road is really a user tax, and you're getting the people that use those roads, why not have those people pay for, for what use they have? So that would be my comment. I don't know if you want to respond to that.
Sure. You know, I get this, I get to have the same conversation about fuel tax, you know. Fuel taxes, we have one of the lowest fuel taxes in the nation, why not just raise the fuel tax a little bit, put a little more money into the system? I mean, it's not a big deal. I'm not opposed to consumption taxes. What I'm opposed to is, you're right, even if you're paying a low fuel tax, or you're not paying any tolls right now, you're paying more taxes to Jefferson City than you ever have before, $28 billion budget. That's a huge number that's grown by a third just since 2010. And in spite of that massive growth in governors, in, in the government taking from the people, we haven't been able to address what my constituents, I believe, have consistently told me is a huge priority for them, which is our roads. So this is not, when we talk about our roads, this is not a money problem, this is a prioritization problem. Adding more money to the system, whether it's toll roads, whether it's fuel tax revenue, that's not going to fix the problem. What's going to fix the problem is holding politicians like myself accountable for prioritizing the $28 billion that you already sent to Jefferson City for what you think is important. So until I, until I get the feeling that we've eliminated every dollar of waste in the $28 billion budget, when I only need 3% to really solve this problem in the first place, I can in good conscience come back to you and ask for more sacrifice and more money, whether it's toll roads, or it's fuel taxes, or what have you.
Interesting. Right now, one fact, not fake news, the West is burning up. Phoenix, Las Vegas, and Southern California are all having record-high temperatures being broken. There's no real denial that climate change, man-caused climate change is going on, but yet I understand you all are considering putting a tax on solar panels. We have a great industry in the renewable industry in this state, and I understand that you all are going to have a tax on that. Was it Bill 340 in the House? Anyway, let's keep solar panel and renewable energy alive in this state.
I, I, oh, okay. I'm sorry. I, I'm actually familiar with what you're talking about, the solar tax. It's actually not a tax, it, well, it is a tax in the form of a fee that would be applied to consumers' electric bills if they had solar panels. And if I'm not mistaken, it would actually triple the fee. Now, I'll tell you what, I, I didn't know about this issue, this is one of the issues that I learned about, and I'll tell you, I am against taxes in all their forms. As I'll say again, we send $28 billion to the state of Missouri, so I have no interest in taxing solar panels or any other product or consumer device, and with the, with the effort to either bring more revenue to the state, which I don't feel that we need, or to lock out certain industries, and we could say this for solar panels on roofs, or we could say this for any industry, that's not my belief set. I think we need less government involvement, I think we need less fees, less taxes. So you, you've given me the example of solar panels. Senator Jason Holsman in Kansas City has spoken to me about this, he's a Democratic colleague of mine, and I agree with him. I don't think that we need more taxes on anything right now. And if it's solar panels or anything else, I, I think that's the conservative way to go.
The solar panel thing will help the world if you work on renewables.
Thank you. Next question.
Hi, my name's Jevon, I'm from O'Fallon, and early, I heard you talk about protecting the life of Missouri citizens, and I also know that Missouri is the second-hungriest state, according to the USDA, in the country. Yet we're giving $4.3 million in TANF money, which is temporary assistance for needy families, to unregulated religious-based clinics. Why would you push for a special, special session on that instead of prioritizing the needs of our hungry children if you say that protecting Missouri citizens is your priority?
Well, the.
Hold your applause, please, please. Thank you.
So alternatives to abortion agencies do benefit from another, a number of state, state programs, and I support that. I support giving women with difficult pregnancies the opportunity to choose life for their children, and that often includes food and shelter, clothing, helping women look for jobs, helping set, set them up with prenatal care. So I have, I have supported alternatives to abortion agencies, as well as, as well as the funding of those same programs. But, but, but as far as, you know, look, no religious organization in the state of Missouri is allowed to receive Missouri state funds. We have a Blaine Amendment, actually, right now, that's being challenged in the U.S. Supreme Court, a case, a Lutheran school out of Columbia is applying the Department, to the Department of National Resources for funding for safe playground material to, to protect the little kids from head injuries. So, so, so no, again, I, pregnancy care centers do great work in the state of Missouri, and I'm very proud to support them.
I'll, I'll add to that. I, I would say, if you're looking for my motivations of supporting any organization, certainly, that, that wants to help me in my role in protecting life, born or unborn, then I, you probably need to, it's pretty self-explanatory for what my motivations are. But you also mentioned the hungry, and I think that there is a desire from every reasonable person in the General Assembly to want to help those that need help, that, and quite frankly, if you look at the welfare programs and our Medicaid programs in the state of Missouri today, they are bigger than they have ever been before in terms of dollars that we're putting, that, the taxpayer dollars that you're sending in to Jefferson City. More of those tax dollars are going to those very programs you're talking about than ever before. So I don't think that, I, I don't think you could make the case that we're, we're starving one program or another because.
The USDA jobs.
Well, but, but what I, what I'm saying is, those programs are bigger than they ever have before, and as those programs gain in size, they're also inefficient. You know, if you look at nationwide, the United States has spent trillions of dollars over the past 40 years on precisely the, the hunger programs you talk about, and, and yet we still have those problems today. What that says to me is, a lot of times, you know, government may not be the answer to all problems. So what, what, what the perspective I have is that the answer doesn't always have to be more government spending. The answer doesn't always have to be more government dollars going to every single program, because every time you ask us to put our hands on the levers of power, understand that these programs are very inefficient. And I'm not saying we don't support them, certainly we do, just by the amount of money we're putting into them, but I think there, there, there are other alternatives as well. But we'll continue to keep our, our commitment to helping those that are less fortunate to us, and I'm proud to do so, and I, I think that Senator Onder would say the same thing.
Yeah, and I would add that food stamp rolls and spending on food stamps is twice as high as it was in 2008. So I, I, I'm not familiar with the statistic you're alluding to, but there's a difference between what's sometimes defined as food insecurity and actual people going hungry. Again, I think that, I think the anti-poverty programs that provide assistance for, for poor people in need of food, I think, as I say, they have, they have, they have grown very, very large. So I think there are sometimes non, non-governmental solutions that need to be looked at.
Thank you for your question. Next one.
Hi, my name is Jill All, I'm a Regional Director for PFLAG National and the Local President of the St. Charles PFLAG Chapter. If you're not familiar, that's the largest grassroots organization for parents and family members who have LGBT children. We're the group that launched Pride St. Charles three years ago. I'm the proud mother of a 31-year-old transgender son who made the decision to leave the state about a year ago after hearing his master's degree from SLU. What are you going to do to protect, protect Missouri's LGBT children?
Well, you know, over the years, you know, I think what you're alluding to is the problem that sometimes LGBT children are, are subject to bullying, and we have, in the Missouri Legislature, repeatedly done what we can, and a lot of it, you know, can't be done from the halls of Jefferson City, to protect all, all children from, from the kind of bullying that would lead them to, lead, lead children to want to leave, leave their schools, leave the state, and sometimes even take their lives. I remember in 2008, I was the, one of the House co-sponsors of a bill commonly known as the Megan Meyer Bill, where I believe former Senator Joe Smith, former Representative Joe Smith, former Senator Scott Rup, sponsored a bill, anti, anti-cyberbullying, because, because poor Megan was the victim of some really vicious bullying, and she eventually took her, took her life. So no child, straight or gay, transgender, or, or, or tall or short, I mean, kids get bullied for all sorts of indefensible reasons.
We're talking more about the bathroom ban bills, and they, and the discrimination that we have that's legal in this state, more than bullying on the schoolyard to kids who aren't LGBT.
Sure.
Megan Meyer's mom happens to be a friend of mine, I'm very familiar with that case.
Sure, sure, sure. You know, as, as, as far as the, I, I think you're alluding to the idea that Missouri does not consider sexual orientation as a protected class under our human, under, in gender identity, under the Missouri Human Rights Act. I, I am not a, a proponent of adding extra protected classes to the Missouri Human Rights Act. I, I think that, I, I think that that is, is not, is not an area we need to go, and I think that could be used to, to litigate and to, and to promote discrimination of those trying to, trying to live out their, live out their faith in their businesses.
You're talking about Senate Bill 98? You're talking about Senate Bill 98, I believe, which was the bathroom bill, and we heard this bill in our Education Committee. I concur with what Senator Onder says in my motivation. Senate Bill 98, by the way, specifies that children must use the bathroom of their biological sex, but grants local authorities the ability to make other accommodations. I support that, not only from a local control level, because I think that's best in this case where that problem can be solved, but I also, there is a question about not just the protecting the rights of those children who identify themselves as transgender, but the other children that are using those restrooms as well. And that is a concern. I'm not just speaking for myself, but I'm speaking from thousands of parents in my district that have...
And you're aware there's never been a documented instance ever where a child has been accosted in a restroom.
Okay.
Let it go to Senator...
I think that what I'm focused on right now is the fact that there is a right to privacy for individuals using those restrooms.
Perhaps protecting them from Republican congressmen who go into restrooms and do lewd things? That's where the issue is, not from innocent transgender women who need to use the restroom because they have to pee. I would encourage both of you to educate yourselves on these issues, because you are sorely lacking.
Well, I appreciate that, and we'll continue to have that discussion.
Yeah, please, yeah, try to keep your questions relatively brief. And again, this is a conversation, not a debate, although it's great if you admit First Amendment. But I just want to make sure everything is civil. That's our whole point. These gentlemen are nice enough to listen to the questions.
Hi, my name is James Vonderhar. I live here in the St. Louis area, and I have brain damage. I was hit by a drunk driver on St. Patrick's Day of 2012. I spent about three years in various therapies and rehab programs and stuff like that, getting back to it. I worked very hard to claw my way out of that abyss, and none of it would have been possible without Obamacare, and none of it is going to be possible without Obamacare. So a while back, the Missouri State Legislature decided not to expand Medicaid, and in so doing doomed thousands of Missourians to death. What I want to know from you is whether or not I can expect better when it's my chopping head on the block, because I want to know, for once, I want somebody that is responsible for this to look me in the eye and tell me that I deserve to die.
Okay, go ahead. I'll go first. Go ahead. Well, first of all, I'm sorry about the accident. That is a terrible situation, and I'm glad that you have recovered from that and put in the effort. So thank you for that, and thank you for sharing the story with us, because it takes a lot of courage to talk about these things in public as well. I'm also glad that you've seen some benefit from President Obama's Obamacare initiative, because there are few of you out there that have seen a benefit. A vast majority of my constituents have seen, a vast majority of my constituents, who apparently are not here today, have...
Okay, let's...
A vast majority of my constituents have been seriously harmed by the rampant increases in their premiums that they've seen over the past eight years. And those increases are creating a healthcare system that's unsustainable. And I'll talk to you, when you talk about Medicaid expansion, Medicaid is probably one of the most inefficient programs in our government today. Forty percent of our budget goes into our Medicaid program right now, and every dollar, we can't fix, you know what, we can't fix it. And the reason we can't fix it is because every dollar we put into it comes with a hook and regulation from the federal government. If we fix it, we may lose all those funds. If you expand a program that's broken even further, not only will you not be able to help the people that you're trying to help, you'll put at risk everybody that's in the system right now by potentially...
Please.
Okay.
Please.
Here's how...
Please let the senators answer.
Yes, yes, look, yes, please.
Here's how I would propose that we fix it. One, we need to get control of a budget program that takes forty percent of our budget. The way we do that is to get a waiver from the federal government that will allow us to change the system without losing the funds that so many Missourians are dependent upon. This was proposed in the State Senate, House, or excuse me, Senate Bill 28, proposed by Senator David Sater, and that would have given us control over this massive program. And until we get that control back, this is why I'm such a big proponent about talking about state sovereignty. We've lost that with how we've gone down the road with Medicaid. Expand...
Shh, sir.
I'll do something and fix it.
Okay. So as I said, what we'd like to do is to be able to get control of that program, and as I mentioned, that's why I talk about state sovereignty, because we've lost it. And if we expand that program in its current format, I'm going to end up hurting every one of my constituents.
Yeah, yes, no, Senator Igles right. Year after year after year, every penny of general revenue growth gets, in the state of Missouri, gets eaten up by Medicaid. The proposition that in some way Medicaid expansion saves lives has been tested in the state of Washington. A controlled trial was done, and there was no benefit. And actually, the non-expansion population actually did a little better health-wise than the Medicaid expansion population. We need to fix our Medicaid system in the state of Missouri, and as Senator Igles pointed out, we need the federal government's permission to do that, because Medicaid is a federal program. We need the waivers that Bill discussed. Those were not forthcoming from the Obama administration. I am very hopeful they will be forthcoming from Secretary Price and from the Trump administration.
I'm sorry, I'd just like to follow up real quick. The waivers that you're referring to are the ones that protect people with pre-existing conditions from being kicked off their health insurance?
No, I apologize for not making, no, I apologize. The waivers I'm talking about, we need a waiver from the federal government to allow us to change and reform our Medicaid program so we can make it more efficient. Not talking about that particular one, no.
Thank you for your question. Next.
Hi, gentlemen. My name is Beth, and I'm one of your constituents. And I moved up here to Missouri in 20, late 2014, after your election, so I moved into your district. I am representing the LGBT community. Last year, you introduced a bill, SJR 39, that would allow for the discrimination of the LGBT community with businesses. And I just wanted to know if you had any interest in starting something up like that again in the Senate, or why, or why wouldn't you do that, and why did you do that?
Okay, SJR 39 really stood for this proposition that after Obergefell, which was the 2015 U.S. Supreme Court decision that ruled that same-sex marriage is a fundamental right under the Constitution of the United States. SJR 39 was an attempt to determine that barrier, while recognizing that under constitutional law of the land, that same-sex couples have a right to marry. Do people of a religious faith, whose faith teaches them something else, that marriage is between a man and a woman, do they have rights not to be compelled, not to be forced by government, to violate their conscience? And unfortunately, there have been cases around the country where people wanting to live out their conscience, who happen to be in the wedding industry, whether it be a florist or a baker, or someone who owns a banquet hall, or a musician, has been punished by government for abiding by their sincerely-held religious beliefs. So that measure last year passed the Missouri Senate. It didn't make it in the House. I think it's in the hands of the House as to whether a bill like that goes forward in the future.
You're looking to create barriers for human beings who are legally married, so they can't use a public service, such as baking a cake?
Oh, not at all, not at all, not at all. The only exemptions that would be granted to business owners under SJR 39, which again was a bill in 2016, would be those in the wedding industry, that they could not be compelled to participate in the wedding ceremony itself. And that, I think, is a common sense measure, and I think that's why I wrote it.
But that's not what that measure would allow businesses to do.
I'm very familiar, no, no, no. A married couple in no way could anyone discriminate against a legally-married couple in the state of Missouri under that bill.
So if I went to a bakery and I ordered a cake from somebody who is Christian, which I'm also Christian, and it's very disheartening to see Christian people hating on Christian people for who they are, but if I go to order a cake, I don't want to be discriminated against, because I want to buy a public service. A cake is a public service. I don't care what you believe in, I don't care how you pee, like, you shouldn't be able to discriminate against anybody. My wife and I could potentially get turned away from a hotel, or a baker, or any of that nature, just by that bill, because people will take it the wrong way and use it how they want to. And you're asking that you want to believe in non-bullying for people and teach people to be not bullies, that you're going to allow discrimination, and those kids are not going to learn anything? They're going to be like, oh, well, that person can stop that person from, you know, coming in here.
Yeah, no, ma'am, no. The only setting in which people of faith who hold to traditional views of marriage would have been protected by that bill would have been, they would be protected from being compelled by government to participate in a wedding ceremony. None of the rest of what you said is true.
Do you believe people would follow that directly?
Ma'am, I think we've covered that.
Okay, thank you so much, but we need to move on. We're just going to do one more question, is that right?
I'll be short.
Okay, yeah, people to be short. I want to emphasize...
We'll do your question, and then the gentleman in back, and then we'll be...
Yeah, because you want to emphasize, you want to get in as many questions as possible. These senators are willing to do this, to listen to these questions on the fly, which frankly, many lawmakers in both parties don't do. So I want to give them a lot of credit for this. So go ahead, ma'am. Jason, Joe, legislators, thank you for having this session. I have to run out of here after I'm done talking, because I teach nursing students at St. Charles Community College. I have a two o'clock class, so I got to get myself out of here. Now, I'm familiar with some statistics, and Missouri's infant mortality rate is five times the national average, also the maternal mortality rate, which means 42 days after delivery. So when will we have a special legislative session to address the needs, or do women not count, and do babies not count because they don't vote? This is very interesting to me, that you talk about sanctity of life with a cluster of cells that will fit underneath your fingernail and you wouldn't notice, but there's no sanctity of life for women and babies. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Well, thank you for that question, and thank you for your career as a medical educator. I myself am involved in medical education as well. And, you know, earlier there was a question about Medicaid and Medicaid expansion, but actually, Missouri law is under Medicaid and under the S-Chip programs, State Children's Insurance Program. Medicaid eligibility for pregnant women and children is actually quite generous, up to about 400% of poverty. So women who are pregnant in this state do get obstetrical care. I think that was a very good policy decision made 15, 20 years ago by our predecessors. And, you know, there are a lot of factors involved in infant mortality, drug abuse, tobacco use during pregnancy, prenatal care, and so on. But the availability of healthcare in the form of obstetrical care in the state of Missouri based on Medicaid eligibility, that's not one of the factors driving that mortality rate.
Okay, we'll take your question. I think, but please keep your questions brief, because we are running out of time.
Yeah, again, this is a questions, we don't want to get into debates.
So we want to make sure everyone gets it, but these are going to be the last two ones, and please keep them brief. So thank you.
Hi there, my name's Jeremy Gibbs, and I actually teach at the school where Meghan would have attended, at Fort Zuma West High School. So there's a number of things I could ask about regarding education. I'm halfway through my career, 15 years into it. What's the status of the retirement system? From what I understand, there's been proposals to try to eliminate it?
Yeah, talk a little, I don't know of any proposals that have come before the Senate to eliminate that. I don't know about that. If you're hearing something, it hasn't reached my ears, certainly it hasn't reached the floor of the Senate. My understanding is this was a commitment that we made to our teachers. We're going to follow through on that. I think there's some concerns in how those retirement systems are set up. They're based on, all those retirement systems are based on a certain amount of money going in, a certain amount of money coming out at a certain point in the future, and a certain rate of return that's earned on that money in between. Now, the rates of return that are being assumed are probably higher than they should be. And so that's what, when you hear the word gaps, that's where those gaps are coming from in these programs, is that the rate of return for the money sitting there in between the time it goes in and comes out have not been what the estimates from previous governments have hoped for. So I think that if gaps have to be addressed, like I said, we have a $28 billion budget in the state of Missouri, and that's the largest budget we've ever had. And I would tell you, meeting those commitments would be high on the priority list for someone like myself.
Yeah, no, and thank you for your service as a teacher. It's a challenging career, but at least a personally rewarding one. And I would second Senator Igles sentiments that we are fully committed to living up to our commitments to our teachers. And I think the good news is unlike the Highway Patrolman's pension system, which is facing serious underfunding, the teachers' retirement system is actually in pretty good shape. It's upwards of 80% funded. So I think you can rest easy, your retirement will be secure.
That's good. And I just want to thank you again for your work with the cyberbullying.
Thank you.
Certainly something that we felt firsthand.
Yeah, my predecessor, Scott Rup, spearheaded that effort, and yeah, he did a great job. Thank you.
All right, this is the final question. Thank you all for your great questions, by the way.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Christine Wells. I am a resident of O'Fallon, Missouri. Now, just recently, you were talking about how pregnant women are protected in the state of Missouri as far as their access to care. Unfortunately, my story goes to the contrary. Now, I know conservatives are big on pro-life, and I'm sure you'll be happy to know that when I found out that I was pregnant at the age of 25, I chose life. She's sitting right behind you. However, in that time, I was working full-time, my husband was working full-time, we paid our taxes, we did what was necessary for us to do as citizens. However, when I found out I was pregnant, I was turned down by the state of Missouri for healthcare, and I fell in that gap between people who did not qualify for state healthcare and people who could not afford privatized healthcare. Okay? And in doing so, not only did I have to find the only OB within a five-mile radius of me who would accept cash-paying patients, but when the Medicaid office told me that they could not grant me Medicaid as a pregnant woman because I was a liability, they literally told me it would be like a car insurance company insuring somebody that they knew was going to get into an accident. I paid out of pocket, not only for my OB, but fortunately for my own research and my own will to make sure that my daughter would be healthy. I hired a midwife, which gave me a much greater quality of care as opposed to what I saw with my OB. So what do you have to say to women who are not afforded that from the state and cannot afford privatized medical insurance, but want to have their child in a healthy manner and want to make sure that that child stays healthy after they are born?
Well, first of all, I think, I speak for Senator Onder as well when I say thank you for sharing that. Clearly, I can see the emotion in your eyes, and that was, how many years has that been?
She's five.
She's five now. And I think, would I be accurate in saying that you still, as you stand here today, you agree with the choice that you made?
I wouldn't take it back.
Absolutely. And I applaud you, because I have heard from many of my constituents who have had similar difficult times raising their children. But I'm thrilled with your choice. I think you made the right one. And, you know, as far as government programs to support, you know, we're striving every day to have the limited amounts of dollars that we have meet the people that have the most need. That is a constant challenge for us. And quite frankly, and I know it's not what you want to hear, but that system's not perfect. And in spite of our efforts of spending record amounts on that, the Medicaid program that you're talking about, there's still these gaps that we're trying to address, and we'll continue to try to address those, because there is a part, regardless of if you're Republican or Democrat, there is a desire on the part of, I think, every one of our citizens to help those that are in need. That is never going to go away, no matter who is in control of the General Assembly or who's in control of Capitol Hill and Washington, D.C. We are always going to want to try to help people. The only difference is, how do we get there from here? There's a difference in philosophy, how we can make those dollars be spent in a manner that's most efficient, so that we can prevent stories like yours, where if somebody needed help, they couldn't get it. Everybody wants to prevent that. We're just trying to get there in a different way. Our Medicaid program, I'm not going to disagree with you at all when you explain about the shortcomings and inefficiencies of our Medicaid program here in the state of Missouri. I was against expanding Medicaid program, because I felt that that would actually make the system unsustainable overall and hurt more people. And maybe you and I disagree, and I know there are people in the audience that disagree with me about that, but the reality is I'm still trying to get to the same place that you're asking me to drive to. The only difference is the route we take. And I want to make sure that we don't do something that inherently will put at risk more people. I think that's what's driving us here. I think that's what's driving us here. But, like I said, I thank you for your comments, and if I would leave you with anything, it would just be that I'm continuing to try to address this anyway, and I'm open to these conversations, which is why Senator Onder and I are here today, whether it's—we're attending town hall meetings and having these kind of conversations. We want to find the right way to get there, and I appreciate you being part of that discussion.
I would also like to know what you would tell my 15-year-old neighbor who was raped by her father and due to inaccessibility. Are you okay with forcing her to have that child?
Well, you know, let me say, first of all, it sounds like a state worker five years ago treated you very unkindly, and I think even gave you inaccurate information, because it sounds like that worker told you that, essentially, that pregnancy was a pre-existing condition, and there's really no pre-existing condition situation in Medicaid. So, you know, certainly, when constituents have that kind of stuff, that is something that my office—if you're in Livin' O'Fallon or Senator Igle's office here—can help you with. But it's inexcusable when state workers treat our constituents that way. You know, look, there are—no doubt about it, there are very difficult situations where very bad things happen, and women become pregnant, but I just don't believe in capital punishment for the crime of the father. So, thank you for the question, though.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks, everybody here.
And we're going to wrap up the show now. For all of our stories, STLpublicradio.org. Follow me on Twitter at Jay Rosenbaum. Follow Joe on Twitter at—
Jay Manis, that's J-M-A-N-I-E-S.
And how would people follow either one of you on Twitter?
I'm at @BillIgle, B-I-L-L-E-I-G-E-L.
And I'm at @BobOndermo, B-O-B-O-N-D-E-R-M-O.
We will be back next time, and now applaud, or make as much noise as you want, for our guests and our show. Thank you all so much.